Hey there.
How's it going?
Pretty good.
But yeah, we enjoyed Canada very much.
I would love to tell you that because I need one copy for Kim and then I think they give me the other copies. Yeah.
I had to get used to kilometers.
Yeah, I just need one.
It's a different vibe.
But JJ will help you with that. He's good with it.
Hello.
You're not usually one of those.
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good. How's it going Amber?
It's going.
Same, nice, great, good.
Just white knuckle and get to the end of the semester.
You got a lot to grade.
Yeah, we're doing programs at the library like right up until tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
That's been stressful this whole semester.
Yeah.
Two of the libraries go, oh, we're still having programs. Why? That's gotta start telling us it's more than a week in advance.
Great, so happy to hear it.
Oh, thank you so much. Luckily those by, yeah, I just leave a trail of blinking lights behind me.
Get facilities ready or communications personnel.
I saw you walking in there with your coat. And I was like, oh, she's blinking too.
Yeah, the firm has said it's gonna be rejoined.
National Institute of Justice grant.
Just busted and it says seventy-eight.
That's actually about sixty-four teams, which means that we wanna get around to the price.
So he says that it's on.
System where we can edit stuff. And I'm a research number one, so it's me and the grant writer trying to coordinate partners.
I came just carrying this sweater and I go, nope, gotta put her down. It makes it exponentially harder than you try to do it yourself.
Well, geez, babe.
He really thought she wouldn't do that. She didn't do that justice.
That's scary. Nice quills.
Nice quills.
It's a very nice quill.
Because it's summer and you know, you know, I just felt so.
Not that one.
It is nice that lets me wear my mitts much longer than this here, because I can wear that here.
So Jason is not gonna be here, so we're gonna start in about an hour.
Fine, you can't sell it. I was, when I was looking at it.
We've been having a lot of. Don't even say it, don't even say it.
Don't put that out there.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's a text message box. These are, so get ones who are just, same spoke. They're a lack of by justice, isn't it? Sharon Ryan.
I casually asked a friend to verify the.
So they'll just get one so that this can follow. In case. You're losing.
Per change between the bar.
So I got a text message from friends. She was at Mellow, so how does that work?
I'm sure they probably wonder about their videos, so they know what to come back to.
You all ready?
We're ready, we're going to. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Heather to call the roll, please.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Prethridge?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Snavely?
Here.
Uh, we will now have a pledge of allegiance if you'd like to join us. You're welcome to.
My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any changes? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you. Uh, we'll now move to public participation and we get, which is probably our favorite night of the year, which is the swearing in of new police officers. And I will turn this over to JJ and Chief Jones can lead us in this process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, tonight I'm gonna introduce you to three, uh, men who are in the beginning stages of their career as an Oxford police officer. Uh, they will swear an oath tonight in front of our community's elected body and for all the community to see. Uh, the oath of office to uphold the constitution, to impartially and with integrity apply the law is something we all take very seriously. We refer to our police officers as sworn personnel, meaning that they have the authority to arrest when applying the law. They have a fundamental duty to serve mankind and to protect lives and property. Uh, these, these men have gone through an extensive process, have been vetted, and they've worked very hard to get here today. So I'm gonna ask all three of them to come up now.
Guys, one of the stairs over here at the corner. An hour, that's very good.
Alright, so first I'm gonna introduce to you, uh, Austin Lovins. Austin's right here. Austin is just twenty-one years old. Uh, he's from Brookville, Indiana. He is a hard worker. He comes from a law enforcement family. Uh, we actually hired him back in July of twenty twenty-three and then sent him to the Butler, uh, the Butler Tech Police Academy. Where he graduated, uh, in January of twenty twenty-four. So he's been out in our field training program, um, and he's getting in the final stages of his training. Uh, so you're gonna likely see him hopefully out on his own in the next, uh, month or two. Uh, Austin is joined tonight by his girlfriend Ashley, his sister Audra, his mother Kershaw, and his father Jason Lovins, who's a deputy at the Franklin County, Indiana Sheriff's Office. So he comes from a law enforcement family and, uh, we're, we're pleased to have Austin aboard with us. Next, I wanna introduce you to Bo, or Jeffrey Bo Stat. We, he goes by Bo. Uh, Bo comes to us with about ten years of experience overall. Uh, seven years from the Brookville, Indiana Police Department and, uh, three years at the Franklin County Sheriff's Office. And yes, it's kind of a small world because Austin's dad, Jason, was one of Bo's first trainers, or I think the first trainer, so. Um, so Bo is, these three men are in various stages of the process. Um, Bo is actually still in the process of obtaining his Ohio certification, uh, through the reciprocity, uh, with a process through a potter. So we're kinda waiting on state government to, uh, the bureaucracy there to get all that stuff processed. But hopefully he's, he's been working on studying law and studying policy and hopefully will soon start his field training program. And Bo is here tonight with his wife Hannah and his son Connor and the one you hear right. And then finally I'll introduce to you Jeremiah South. Uh, Jeremiah is just beginning his field training program and has a few more months to go. Uh, so you'll see him out at about now with training officers. Um, Jeremiah has about ten years of, uh, both part-time and full-time law enforcement experience. His latest role was working as a sergeant at the Linder Center of Hope, uh, as a police officer at that hospital. Uh, Jeremiah lives, uh, uh, just outside of Oxford in Milford Township. His children attend Talawanda Schools and he's joined tonight by his wife Letta, his daughter Paisley, and his son Zaleek. He's also joined with, uh, his parents are here, Alan and Katie. Um, so we're super excited to have these fine individuals aboard our police division and then have them sworn in by, uh, the Assistant Law Director Ben Mazur. So I'll ask him to come up and do the actual swearing.
If you guys can line up there and face this way.
Basically.
It's not the stage.
Come over here, Austin.
Alright, gentlemen, if you'll raise your right hand and come and repeat after me, okay? I. Say your name.
Jeremiah Lovins.
solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
And that I will, in all respects.
And that I will, in all respects.
Enforce.
Enforce.
The provisions of the Charter.
The provisions of the Charter.
And the ordinances of the City of Oxford.
And the ordinances of the City of Oxford.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Police Officer.
The duties of the Office of Police Officer.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I pledge to enforce.
I pledge to enforce.
The laws of the City of Oxford.
The laws of the City of Oxford.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
Partially and with integrity.
Partially and with integrity.
Never using my authority for personal or private motives.
Never using my authority for personal or private motives.
But applying the law fairly and equally.
But applying the law fairly and equally.
To all persons solely in the interest.
To all persons solely in the interest.
Of the public peace, safety, and lawfare.
Of the public peace, safety, and lawfare.
And I further pledge to so conduct myself.
And I further pledge to so conduct myself.
As to bring credit to the Police Division.
As to bring credit to the Police Division.
Of the City of Oxford at all times.
Of the City of Oxford at all times.
So, so we still have, uh. So now I'm gonna ask, you guys stay there and, uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, uh, Jason, Hannah, and Letta to come up and we'll do the badge pin, so. Alright, now, now, uh, let me, so Austin's gonna be pinned, uh, by his father Jason. He's gonna wear badge forty-one. Uh, Bo is being pinned by his wife Hannah and wearing badge forty-seven. And Jeremiah's being pinned by his wife Letta and will wear badge forty-nine.
Maybe I get stabbed.
Alright, well, thanks guys, uh, uh, give me another round of applause. So, thank you. Um, so no, I, I appreciate council indulging us in that ceremony. I think it's important that they do this, uh, in front of the community and, um, take their oath and that everybody gets to see them and know who they are and, um, so we, we really appreciate that. Um, since I have an audience of police officers with me, I'll just, uh, normally I would save these comments till the end, but I'll just, uh, um, explain that, uh, this is kinda special because this falls, this council meeting's falling right before Police Week. So tomorrow is a, a campaign called Light Ohio Blue where, uh, folks put their porch light, a, a blue porch light on to support law enforcement. Um, but then next week, beginning, uh, the twelfth through the eighteenth is National Police Week. Um, so there's a lot of festivities out at the National Memorial Wall in Washington DC. Um, and then of course the fifteenth is always, uh, the National Peace Officer Memorial Day where we, um, honor those who have given their life in service. And, uh, and, you know, unfortunately it continues to happen and it happened last Monday, a tragedy in Charlotte, North Carolina, where four officers, uh, gave their life and sacrificed their community, so. Um, so again, I just wanna thank you for allowing us to do this and thank the community who, um, uh, is very supportive of Oxford Police, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and welcome to all three of you. Uh, we're real excited. This is, like I said before, I think this is one of our favorite days that we're on council is when we get to welcome you to Oxford and on the police force, so welcome, we're glad to have you.
I'm gonna go out and take a picture real quick.
Yep.
And if I just could real briefly, this is probably one of the few times that we'll get to see the family members.
That's right.
And it's a family affair and, and not without stresses and, and difficulties, so I wanna thank all the family. You know, first thank Lou and congratulations to our new officers, but thank you to all the people who have gotten them to this place and we'll see them through difficult shifts in the service of the community of Oxford. Oxford's really grateful for that, so thank you.
We'll take a moment to.
We lose half our audience.
What's that?
We lose half our audience.
Okay, that was great. Um, the next item is the twenty twenty-three TOPS Annual Report and Next Steps, and I'd like to invite Sheri Martin and Suzie Hummel come forward and give us a short report. You guys have been busy.
Yes, we have been busy. I thought you were gonna say this is your favorite meeting of the year because we're.
Because TOPS is here.
Right? Alright, we have a presentation. Oh. What do I, oh, there we go, okay. So, thank you to city council and staff for allowing us to present this information to all of you tonight. Um, and thank you for the many years of providing support, financial support and advocacy to allow us to help meet the basic survival needs of Oxford residents who live in poverty. A few years ago, a community member was struggling financially and hesitated to seek help. Some friends at her church suggested she visit the FRC, but she was embarrassed. She was usually the one that gave, that everyone came to for support and help. She felt like a failure and didn't want anyone to know. Unfortunately, she waited too long. And by the time she showed up at FRC's door, she had not eaten in two days. She was overwhelmed by the care she received. They met her immediate needs by giving her a gift card for a meal and setting her up with the food pantry. As they got to work on helping her get her finances back, and then they got to work on helping her get her finances back on track. She teared up as she remembered, at last, I could finally breathe. This is just one of many stories that we hear every day and every month at TOPS and, and FRC. My name is Suzie Hummel. I am the new board chair of TOPS Organization.
Hello, I'm Sheri Martin. I'm the Executive Director for TOPS. Um, do you need to know where I live? I, I'm in the township. Um, anyway. So, as you, as you know, um, up until recently, TOPS and the Resource Center were located right next to each other, um, but separate organizations. Um, here's a quick summary of each, uh, TOPS previously referred to as just a food pantry, um, while the FRC focused on homeless services, homeless homelessness prevention, and, uh, helping clients navigate benefit applications. Um, our merge committee has been hard at work and we're thrilled to announce that we are now one organization as of April first. Our two boards have merged, um, and on the slide are all of their names. Um, this current board will serve until the end of the year. Our name will, will remain TOPS as the SS stands for Social Services and that is what the Family Resource Center has always done and brings to TOPS. Um, I also just wanna mention that we are a small but mighty staff of two full-time members, uh, myself and Nicole Rodriguez, and we have several part-time interns and notable volunteers.
So as Sheri mentioned, we have recently merged and so we wanted to share our vision with you all, um, for the future. So our vision is to become a community hub, making it easier for our neighbors in need to access many of the local service, social service organizations by building a campus. Um, TOPS was graciously awarded ARPA money by both Butler County and the City of Oxford, um, to build a new building. So that's gonna be built in the back part of the lot that we're currently on and then we still will have the three buildings in the front that we can use for other, um, reasons. So what's next in twenty twenty-four? Um, we've got lots of things to do, but just a few things we wanna mention. One is to align the two organizations. So legally, we are one organization, but we still need to combine websites and bank accounts and utility accounts and board manuals and all, all that stuff that comes with it. Um, so we're gonna work hard on that. We're gonna start creating committees, which we're gonna reach out to community members to hopefully fill some of those committees. We are gonna break ground hopefully this year on the new building. If it's not this fall, it will be next spring, but we're hoping that that will happen this fall. Um, we're gonna identify some wraparound services. We'll talk, I'll talk about that in a moment. And then evaluate the organization. Um, we, we know that, in my humble opinion, we are a strong organization and a strong board, but we know we can always be better. So, um, we are gonna spend this next year to, or this next eight months or so to really take a close look in the mirror to see where we can be better and how we can become the organization that the Talawanda School District expects us to be. So after twenty twenty-four, um, what's, what's next? So we're gonna continue working on the building. Like I said, we hope that that's gonna be done or that's gonna be started this year, but it will definitely be started by next year. Um, it has to be done by the end of twenty twenty-six, so, um, we know that that's our deadline, uh, because of the ARPA money and that's, that's our goal. Um, we're gonna begin offering these wraparound services. So these are services that, um, are services that are outside the scope of TOPS that maybe other community organizations provide that we can invite onto the campus of TOPS to provide those services to our, our clients. Things such as maybe some health screenings, maybe some educational webinars, maybe some GED classes or ESL classes or things like that that would really benefit our clients that we could provide on our campus. And we wanna, uh, provide even better customer service. Our staff is awesome, but we know that there's always ways that we can improve there as well to bring exceptional experience to both our clients and we wanna make sure that our awesome volunteers also have that exceptional experience. And then we're gonna increase our presence in our, in the community. We, you will see us out more and more and, and especially in twenty twenty-five at festivals, at the farmer's market, at different events going on. We wanna be present and we wanna be visible in the community.
So, our goal is to provide, you know, our basic services in the new building so that the community can not only survive but start to thrive. Um, some of the things that we would like to include would be showers, laundry, computer stations. Um, and then in our campus, we hope to con, um, include hot meals, phone charging stations or tornado shelter and resources from partner agencies. Um, and then we hear a few of our community partners. I, we might be missing a few. We have a lot of community partners, a lot of support from the whole city and Talawanda community. Um, we're so appreciative, appreciative of all of our partners and all of our generous, generous individual donors.
So you may be asking yourself, how can I begin to or continue to be part of this exciting future? So we've got several ways that, um, you can help support us and help be part of the TOPS story. Obviously by doing food drives and, and picking up food, doing, um, dropping off food to us. Grocery bags, we always need grocery bags. When our customers come to shop at TOPS, we send them with bags of groceries just like you would take from Kroger or, or Walmart. Um, so anytime you go grocery shopping, don't throw those bags away. Bad for the environment, good for TOPS. Um, used shoes, we do an annual fundraiser, um, that we will collect your used shoes and then a company buys them from us and that's one way that we can raise some money. And then of course, we always welcome monetary donations. But another big way that we, um, would love to have you fit into our story is by volunteering. We've listed a bunch of ways that you can volunteer. We have opportunities if you wanna do it every now and then, or if you wanna be a regular volunteer. We've got opportunities if you only have thirty minutes or if you wanna spend four hours with us. And we have opportunities that we need some more muscle and other, for other people that, you know, might just want a desk job or, or a light duty job, we've got those opportunities as well. So really, if people want to volunteer, um, give back to the community, TOPS is a great place to do it. We've got something for you to do. Um, so going forward, um, TOPS will be a strong partner with the city. Our committed board and staff will be responsible stewards of taxpayer funds allotted to, allocated to us. In part, we rely on the support from the city and are always glad to provide input about what resources we could use and we will share with you the outcomes we achieve because of your commitment to our work. So thank you very much for allowing us to come tonight, but also for your continued support. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for coming.
Sure.
It's a great report.
Good.
Anybody have questions? No?
I have a comment.
Comment.
I mean, the, we just saw a presentation and like bat, new pins of new police officers and they're such obvious heroes, right? Um, and I feel like y'all are heroes too. And so thank you so much for the work you do because you do not get paid very well at all, but you're out there every single day, so I just wanna ask if we can give you a little bit of an applause, because I think you deserve it. Thank you for your service.
Anyone else have comments or questions?
I would just comment that I think that, um, we are a town where there's so much giving and generosity and we're a town of organizations and that diversity is good, but I think the idea of joining forces and the economies of scale, that you get the efficiencies of that, I think are really, it's great to see. So I think, you know, I do look far to a much stronger organization together, um, so it's good, thank you.
I'm real proud of everything you do.
Thank you.
And, uh, I would encourage the public on those garbage, uh, grocery bags. Cause I bring those in periodically and, um, everybody's always happy to see them.
Yeah, it's, it's the little things sometimes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we'll, we'll move to public comments and anybody who would like to address council about items that are not on tonight's agenda, or if they're on the consent agenda, this would be the time. So please come forward and give us your name and where you live and we will give you five minutes. Would anyone like to address council tonight? Our big crowd that we had, kind of evaporated, but we're glad to have all of you nonetheless. Alright, we'll move to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We'll move to resolutions. You can read the first one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Passport Labs Incorporated for the annual software subscription for the city's parking management platforms at the cost not to exceed fifty-six thousand one hundred and ten dollars for the first year with an increase of five percent each year thereafter.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. JJ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, well, this is not nearly as exciting. This is parking software. Um, every three years we'll have to come to you to renew this contract, um, or purchase a different software product, but, um, this is Passport Incorporated. We've had this since twenty eighteen. It, uh, works well for us. Um, we've, we're gonna add a couple of features that will, um, improve our customer service. Will, uh, allow some online permits for like residential permits and, uh, and, uh, another mobile app option. Allow some online permits for like residential permits and, and another mobile app option. If somebody from a different, you know, lives in a different community and has Passport as an app, they can use that when they come to Oxford. They don't have to download the Park Mobile app. So, so that's what this is. Of course, costs continue to go up, but this is, we think this is reasonable and it's worked well for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Chief?
Yep.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this resolution? Okay, council have any questions or comments?
This is not directly to the point of the resolution, but I was parking on Walnut the other day and realized that not all of our parking meters have been switched over. Are we planning to do that?
So that'll come into play with the, the next capital improvement but, cycle. That'll be something we'll have to talk to the city manager about. I mean, certainly we have an infrastructure plan to continue to replace those. But, you know, whether this year is the right year to do that or not, to, to put it in for next year, we'll have to see.
Yeah.
It, we're spoiled by using the credit card or the app and all of a sudden it took coins and I didn't have coin. So thank you to the dispatcher who gave me change for.
If I could just add to technical question, because one of the things, so that's cool that, that, you know, one of the things that you make the transition to the app is you realize every community has a different service, you know? So is there a way that we can sign those things so someone has, as the Passport app would know that they could use?
Yeah, so once, so right now the, and, and actually at the, the traditional coin only meters, you could use an app. If you had the Park Mobile app, you could have used that to pay. But once, if we, once we get signed on with the Passport app, yes, we'll have to get stickers to add to the meter to show that Passport is an option. You know, I don't, I don't know the particulars of whether the zones are different for Passport than Park Mobile, but it, it'll, it'll just allow someone, like I said, they, we got people coming from all over the, the country. So some people may use Passport regularly in their city versus Park Mobile.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Any other comments or questions? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. You can read the second.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with MediCount Management Incorporated for the emergency medical services, billing services at a cost of five and a half percent of the gross amount collected.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Chief DeThridge, welcome.
Good evening. I really thought more people would stay, but they saw.
It's exciting stuff right here.
EMS billing, come on.
You have no idea how exciting this is. In February of this year, we were notified by our billing company that they were going to stop servicing us at the end of our contract period, which is October 30th. They're moving away from smaller departments and just servicing larger, larger businesses, larger departments. Shortly after that, they had a cybersecurity issue. You guys might have all been aware of that with United Healthcare and that old deal that went through. So it sped up our process a little bit. We were able to renegotiate our end date with them and find a new company. So here tonight to get approval for the city manager to sign the contract with the new billing company.
Okay. And did you go out for bids on that or?
We did not. We got proposals.
There's not a whole lot of people to do it.
From a couple of companies.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this item? Okay, thank you. Counselors have any questions for Chief DeThridge or comments?
Well, it was notable that it, that kind of they did us a favor in dropping us because this is a bet, this service is less expensive significantly so? Is that what you said?
No, this service is a half a percent higher than the service we're getting.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have misunderstood.
The company we're going with is significantly cheaper than the other one that we, that we talked to.
Okay.
All right. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution's adopted. And we'll move to C.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a 12-month contract totaling $99,996 with Next Step Networking to provide information technology field staff support with an annual renewal option with a 3% increase.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Hi, Jessica.
Good evening. In March, our full-time information technology technician resigned and this was a newer position that we'd had for a few years. And to be honest, during that tenure, we struggled with the scale and scope of the roles for this position. So with that resignation, we had a chance to kind of take a step back and review what is the right step for IT for the city of Oxford. And we'd explored options with Next Step and learned that they offer, they are, they are our long-term IT support services. They do like our security, our upgrades, you know, they do the bulk of our IT supports. We learned that they have what's called a field staff position where they will be a Next Step employee. Next Step will pay their salary, their benefits, take care of their training, take care of their supervision. But the person is on site in our offices. Next Step would ensure proper licensure and make sure that they're kind of keeping up with trends in the IT world. We had an opportunity to interview their field staff candidate and we're highly impressed. Because I'll be honest, for a minute there, I was like, maybe we should just hire someone again, I don't know. But when we compared the candidate they brought to us and the cost, which we knew include benefits and retirement and things, it's very similar to what we were paying. We thought this is a better approach and we would recommend this contract.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this one? Okay, counselors?
I do have a question and it's less about Next Step that this is the reflection of a certain evolution of staffing related to IT. Not very long ago, we had a GIS coordinator who was a staff position in community development. And, and then we, that was, as that person left, now we had a Patrick who was here was an IT person and now we have Next Step. But I'm, I'm just kind of curious how that's worked out because I know that as Zach's title is now like Planner One, GIS Coordinator.
City Planner, GIS Coordinator.
Yeah, so I, I guess just that, I mean, I think this sounds like a, if this is a point of reflection where like, oh, how did this work out? It didn't work out well with the IT. Is it a moment of reflection on whether is everything, you know, from a community development point of view? Do they have the staffing necessary to do that, what they used to be able to do? I mean, this was, this, this was a shift. And so I'm just, at this point, how that shift has worked out?
When Mr. Wilson left, we sat down as a whole team and talked about what role he played. And we found that for most of the city, I'm not going to speak for community development, his IT support was the most valued. And so that is where we really explored filling this position. And so we really do need someone on site to handle the day-to-day IT. With this latest departure, we went right into IT. We did not take a moment and reflect Sam's GIS needs and things, but we, we could. I'm going to speak to that.
Thanks, Jessica. During that transition, it just so happened that Zachary Moore was wanting to grow his GIS expertise and involvement with the rest of the organization. So that did work out well. So we did not need to go outside and recruit someone else. There's always need for more staff.
Yeah.
We're hoping to add some more part-time staff and co-op in the future to help create some redundancy. But we're okay right now for GIS coordination.
Okay, that was kind of my question. I just want to make sure that we weren't shortchanging that important role while through the shift.
Okay, further questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. And we'll go to the last one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Parks and Corporation for the purchase of specified equipment listed on the rebuild spec sheet at a cost not to exceed $100,995 with a contingency of $10,000 for a total not to exceed $110,000, or sorry, $110,995.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, y'all. This is a specialized piece of equipment at our, at the entry to the wastewater treatment plant. If you could picture about a three-story building stuck into the ground with about 5,000 string plates, this machine screens inorganics out of the waste stream prior to biological treatment at the plant. It's a critical piece of equipment. It's been running 24/7, non-stop since the late 1990s. So it's at the end of its useful life. This is very specialized equipment. I don't know that I've ever asked for a no-bid contract before from the city, but there's only one supplier and we're replacing like-for-like. So we are not going to have engineering or design costs. We're simply switching one unit for another. So we talked with the finance director and our auditor. They recommend that we do not have to go out for advertising because we'll just get one bid and get a resolution from council to approve the purchase. We're asking for that tonight to replace this equipment.
How long does it take to switch it out and what do you do?
Probably about a three-day project. We're going to, this is for materials only. So we're going to partner this when we have a crane on site to do some other work in our generation basis. So we'll marry these two projects together and have some economy of scale. This is for material.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, counselors have any questions?
I guess I would say this is a really big investment. My previous, before I went to graduate school, I was an inspector for NPDES, NPDES inspector for sewage treatment plants. And that piece of equipment is the thing that safeguards all of the rest of the plant from grit and things like that that make, that would just wind down all your pumps and everything. And it's remarkable what goes down the sewers.
Yeah, it is.
You know, and so it's a really worthwhile investment because that $100,000 is saving however many millions of dollars in equipment costs nearly downstream.
And it is the highest-grade stainless steel, so it's, while expensive, it is critical and well worth the investment.
And so you've got local contracts, so will you be able to assemble this then or, you know, contractors?
Not local, but people that work on plants older.
And is, do we have, but that budgeted for, is that part of this contract as well?
We have contracted services that's budgeted.
Okay, thank you.
We're actually spending a little more than we budgeted for the materials. Stainless steel is skyrocketing. We're spending about $100,000 where we, in the CIP, we had 90, 90-plus.
Okay. Are there other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
We'll move now to ordinances and we have an ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an easement agreement between the city of Oxford and Duke Energy Ohio Incorporated for the construction of Butler County Regional Transit Authority's new transportation facilities, electrical infrastructure as set forth in Exhibit A attached here too.
Okay, Michael, you're going to?
Several months ago, council granted easements for this project already for ingress, egress and construction, temporary construction easements. Upon further review from their consultant and their designers, Duke Energy requires an extension of an existing electrical easement. So this is simply an extension of an existing easement that is already there for Duke. So I don't see a downside to this other than since this facility will be in an easement, if we ever have to relocate this, it would be at our cost, but I think that's the only downfall. Needing to see the project being sold.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this item?
Yeah, and so I, as I wrote to city council earlier, I would ask that council pass a motion to suspend the second reading. We explored whether we could pass it as an emergency. I didn't feel that it met the requirements of our charter. But in our charter, we have a provision that council can pass a motion to suspend the second reading and then pass a motion to adopt the ordinance as if this were the second meeting. The, the advantage of that is that it would eliminate two weeks between this meeting and the next one. It still would take 30 days become, to become effective after tonight's meeting, but it, once again, it would speed it up by two weeks. So I would ask that council first pass a motion to suspend the second reading.
Okay, is there a motion to suspend second reading? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Do you all understand what's going on? Okay? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I think, I think we did that once before with purchasing police equipment. I think we suspended.
May have, I can't remember, but yeah.
So that was on the motion. Do we still need public, public comment?
Yeah, you need a motion to adopt.
So now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Nothing new, I assume?
Since one minute ago.
Further reading.
No, further. And if, if there's anybody from the public who wants to talk about it, you've got another chance, okay? Counselors, any comments, questions or concerns?
Thanks for the flexibility. I know this is a $21 million project BCR TA that was going on and every minute of delay is money. So I'm glad we were able to help.
It's an important project. I'm glad to see it's moving forward. Any other comments or questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prether?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Nably?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted and we'll move to the second first reading.
An ordinance amending section 1143-10, Uptown District Paragraph B, uses, 1, permitted uses, E, sidewalk uses by adding 3i.
Okay, and Doug, you want to talk about that?
Yes, so the city of Oxford has permitted business owners in the Uptown District to utilize the public sidewalk in front of their businesses for displays, counters, tables, chairs, umbrellas and planners that are movable since 2007 or earlier. The use must allow at least five feet of open and unobstructed public sidewalk. Several residents and council members have expressed concerns regarding merchandise remaining outside for long periods of time and causing public safety issues. So the proposed ordinance amendment would require all business owners in the Uptown District to remove merchandise from the public sidewalk when the store is closed.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address? Please come on up and give us your name and where you live. And we'll be glad to hear from you. That's okay.
Anyway, I've been doing this for 50.
Just tell us who you are and where you live.
Oh, Bertie West-Pfizer.
Yeah? And you live in Oxford.
Owner of the Bird House Antique Shop. Been in Oxford for years and have had the shop for 51 years continuously in Oxford. And a year ago, I probably started, I think about then, I put some garden things out, benches and gee, people really liked it. And then some other things appeared and, oh, that looks good with that. And people started calling and, oh, business is picking up. My business has doubled since I've had things outside. And I would very much like to continue to put things outside permanently, but use a little more discretion and a little more taste. I don't think it's harmful to anybody. It's healthy, it's harmless. People seem to love it. It's out there day and night and people, the walkers in the morning look at things. The people in the evening that stroll around, they, they look at things. Parents at the university are excited to come. They, they love all that stuff out there. And I see that it's harmless and it's not impeding traffic or anything. There is, there is nothing in my storefront outside, that's outside the overhang. It's all behind there. And if you look up and down the streets, many have their things out clear to the sidewalk. And they stay out there. And I just don't see why I should be not allowed like the others to have my things out there. As I said, my business has doubled. People call. Yesterday, a lady called, said there's a pump outside, that yellow pump, we'd like that. And I said, well, we're closed. And I said, you know, put the money in the door and take it if you want. She put a check in the door and took it. in the door and took it. Today, somebody calls about the chest outside, just five hours ago. They want the chest outside. Okay, save it for tomorrow. And two little tables, somebody wanted those. They said, put the money in the door. And they do. And nobody steals anything, which speaks well for Oxford, I would think. And all this crime is rampant all over the country, all the cities. And Oxford, I'm trusting them, they're trusting me. It's just a phenomenon, a heartwarming phenomenon to me. I get all choked up.
Thank you.
Anyway, one thing was stolen. It was a Coca-Cola chair, folding chair. About six weeks later, somebody found it sitting on a porch down the street in College Avenue. And one of the gals that helps me in the shop, she went up there and said, oh, cute chair, where'd you get that? Oh, my buddy stole it. I've been meaning to bring it back. Still had the property, the birdhouse on it, right in plain sight. And she said, well, I'll just take it for you. So she brought it back. And that's the only incident that I can think of in a year. And with all these wild students we talked about and everything, they're, they're nice, and they're trustworthy. And I think I should be allowed to have a certain percentage of things, benches and chairs and seasonal things. I think I should be allowed to have them outside. And I don't see that it's dangerous in any way whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Any, you want to ask me questions?
Nope. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
So what now?
Thank you. Now you can have a seat. We'll see if anybody else wants to comment on the proposed ordinance. Okay, councilors, have any comments? If you have questions for Mrs. West Pfizer, I'm sure she'll come back up. Anyone?
I'm not sure where this came out of, but I don't have a problem with this. I think it's one of those kind of quaint, small-town things. I mean, we've had antique stores as long as I've been alive, probably as long as you've been alive. I don't know. I kind of like going down High Street first thing in the morning and seeing what's out, out front. So I don't, I don't, I don't want to do this.
Okay. Can I ask them, just for some clarification? One, is there's no prohibition on display of merchandise during business hours. So that's correct. I mean, what this solely does is limits the, the display or the storage of the materials after the business is closed, number one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so just for clarification, the display of merchandise on the street, for all the benefits you're talking about, is still permitted during business hours. Is that correct? And then the other thing is that furniture, for the purposes of the business, like, other people have tables for their businesses, and those need not necessarily be, like, Kofenia doesn't need to pull the tables in. So if there were a bench, for example, that may likely be able to be permitted. It's just a display of merchandise 24/7 is what this, okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I will fess up as someone who has, you know, I'm all about the vibrance of the streetscape, and I think to a certain degree, it adds to that. And so I, I, you know, I like to see more things going on in the street. I think, however, from, one, a public safety and, two, a fairness point of view, there have to be limits on what is stored in the public right-of-way. And, and to me, when I look at our ordinance as, as it was written already, I think it presumed that the merchandise would, would be displayed. I mean, displayed is different from stored 24/7. And, and so I think, I really view this as, to some degree, a clarification of what I think was a presumption of our existing code, that, that merchandise was not to be displayed 24/7, 365, on the sidewalk. I think Ms. West Pfizer's, the kind of things that are stored can stand up to that. But, you know, the planner in me thinks, well, if we let one person do it, what is it? And you spin it down the road, and you start to see that this, this wouldn't be good if everyone did it. And, and I, and I did, to be honest, I did see public safety concerns. Like, you know, when I see panes of glass out on the sidewalk, or ladders leaned up against canopies, you know, I went out one day, and there was a pump that had lain and fallen over the sidewalk and the ADA ramp. And I think that, I, you know, I, I really hope that you or any other person continues to display merchandise, and for all the benefits that you described, but that that merchandise, that you have a place for to pull it in at night. And, and I think that's what this ordinance is about, so.
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else?
And just for clarity, was this in, and maybe I'm completely not observant, but did this just start a year ago, as far as permanently? Has it only been a year that everything has been out all the time?
That's when it started, yes.
Only a year?
And I, I took over other towns.
Did anybody go to Noblesville, Indiana?
Okay, we can't have a conversation because it doesn't get picked up by the video, and we want everybody to see everything for the record that happens in the meeting.
Do you want me now to talk?
So if you want to talk, you need to come up to the podium. That's it. Because just like, you can't hear us if we're not close to the mic, we can't all hear you either.
Okay. Well, anyways, anybody been to Noblesville, Indiana, just for instance? Antique shops, every antique shop has everything out day and night. It stays there. It's a quaint town. It's not a junky, po-dung town. It's affluent.
Okay.
And they allow it. And people love it. They go in droves there.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And I, I agree. Ladders, no good. Yeah. I, I agree. And things like that. That's a safety issue right there. Yeah. But I would be very careful in the future.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it.
Is that okay?
Yep. Good job. It wasn't so hard. Any other comments or questions? Now, this is first reading, so it'll come back up at our next meeting, and we'll vote on it at that time.
I have one more question. I'm sorry, I keep making you walk up and down. I'm just trying to think about, when you said about the phone calls you're getting, are they calling you throughout the night, or what are the business hours?
Well, anytime, anytime. The business hours are 12 to 5:00.
12 to 5:00, okay.
And, and this morning, or yesterday morning, the call was about 10:00.
10:00 call, okay. I'm repeating it because it has to be on the recording.
Have those always been the business hours? Or is it, I'm just thinking, as, as the business, if the hours are changing, does that mean?
It used to be 10 to 5:00. It used to be 10 to 6:00, then 10 to 5:00, then 11 to 5:00, then COVID, then 12 to 5:00. And then, nobody to work on Mondays. I didn't feel like it. So we're chance or appointment on Mondays.
Gotcha. So if there were, just perchance, if the business hours were back to where they were, people would have more opportunity to come in the store?
Oh, no. That doesn't have, that has no bearing on it, no. People like the 12 to 5:00. And they, when they're walking up and down the street, they like to feel it, touch it, handle it, sit on it. And they don't have to order it online. We don't have anything online. It's right there to enjoy.
Thank you. Any other questions for her before she sits down?
She moves fast.
Okay, thank you for popping up again. Any other comments or questions? Okay, this will come up at second reading at our next meeting. We have no second readings tonight, and so we will move to announcements and communication. I'll start with city manager Doug Elliott.
Yeah, I just want to give the public an update. Mayor, myself, and the assistant city manager met in April, April 18th, with officials from Miami University to continue our discussion of the need for additional staff in the Fire EMS Division and the current deficit spending in the Fire EMS Fund. And I'm happy to say that a tentative agreement was reached with Miami. Both parties agreed to contribute $1,270,000 each year for 10 years to the Fire EMS Fund, Fund 418, to provide additional staffing and capital equipment. This proposed new funding addresses the 12-year estimated average annual fund deficit of 2.5 million. The tentative agreement is contingent upon the city's passage in the general election of November 5, 2024, of a 2.6 mil 10-year Fire EMS real property tax levy. Miami University would meet its obligation with a payment in lieu of taxes. We provided supporting documentation of this estimated average annual fund deficit in a draft proposed Fire EMS service agreement to Miami University officials. So my plan is, at the next council meeting, to present the first of two resolutions. The first one will be sent to the county auditor upon adoption by city council to certify the amount of revenue that a 2.6 mil levy would generate each year. We have an estimate, but this is required under the state statute. So that's the first resolution that we would need to send to the county auditor. Once we receive the estimate back from the county auditor, then we would need to pass a final resolution, which is a resolution of necessity, to place the proposed additional levy on the ballot for the November 5, 2024 general election. So this local tax levy issue must be certified and filed with the Butler County Board of Elections 90 days before the general election, or August 7, 2024. So that's the game plan. Like I said, we were pleased to reach an agreement with Miami University. They recognize that we provide excellent service that is important for the health and safety of their students. So I wanted to share that with, with council and the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank Doug and Jessica for, and all the members of staff who worked so hard to get all the data and the information put together for Miami. And I want to commend Miami. They were very cooperative, and they understood the situation perfectly. And so it turned out to be, I think, a very good meeting.
Yeah, and I think we should also thank Chantel, and, and I forget who else went to the, to the board of trustees meeting, because every little bit helps.
Yeah, you bet.
And, yeah, I mean, this has been a joint effort. And we all recognize the great service that we get from our Fire EMS folks. And, you know, the fact that they're basically doing one heck of a job with very few staff. I mean, as I said earlier at a council meeting, if you compare us, for example, to the city of Monroe, we run about the same number of runs each year. They do it with a staff of 40, and we were doing it with a full-time staff of 90. So, big difference.
Of nine.
Nine.
What'd I say?
You said ninety.
Nine, nine, Doug. I, I think that was wishful thinking on my part.
Wishful thinking, yeah. Okay, thank you. Michael?
No, thank you, Mike.
Okay, chief?
Just that we're, God's getting ahead with the worst of whatever, so.
Yeah, let's, let's move along. Heidi?
I just wanted to say, if you get an email from me, my name's changed. I didn't hear it.
Congratulations.
I just announced right now, for anyone that didn't know how to announce it. And I wanted to say thank you again for Casey, for organizing the Blood Drive yesterday in Joe's honor. It was a lot of city employees. It was really great. And I think we did it justice.
Okay. Chief DeThridge, you have anything?
Hurry.
Hurry, okay. Casey?
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving right along.
Nothing, thank you.
Jessica?
Any reports are published. It'll be on the website. It already is on the website, and we'll put out a special email next week.
Thank you.
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing.
Leave your dogs, pick up your dog's poop.
Do you have anything?
Really quick. Our car was hit on the side of our road, right? It was a hit-and-run. My neighbor called in, the license plate. I'm a little confused about what happened, because it said that as we were switching over to the county dispatch, the information got lost. So that made me a little, I just want to bring it to your attention and try to figure out, is there something going wrong with the dispatch, or where do we need to?
Off the, hold it into it.
Great.
Amber?
I miss Debbie Anderson's emails.
Me too.
David?
So I want to talk, next time, when I have more time, about the Fire EMS. Miami has stepped up. Now the city's Oxford's turn.
Absolutely. I have nothing, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn so we can all get safe.
Second.
All, we are adjourned.